Raise for the pledge. Councilwoman Alexander.
Eternal God, our Father, Lord God, will come again to me and thank you, Lord. Lord God, thank you for this day that you have made, Lord God. Lord God, continue to bless us with your blessings, Lord, about doing your business, Lord. Lord God, continue to keep our police, our fire safe, Lord, and continue to give us the wisdom and knowledge that we need, Lord God, to do your will, in Jesus' name and prayer.
Thank you. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
President.
Spitali.
Here.
Vines.
Here.
Kalwinski.
Here.
Torres.
Here.
Tyler.
Here.
Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warpo.
Here. Let the record show nine present, seven in chambers, two by Zoom. Just as a point of order that was raised a minute ago, Clerk Golick, do you want to state the statute as far as voting on the budget by Zoom?
I was getting the...I don't have the budget. I mean, I don't have the IC statute with...
Basically...
Attorney Smith has the...
Attorney Smith, can you address the issue real quick of voting on the budget from Zoom, that it's not...they have to be present and in chambers?
Sure. There's a...the Indiana Legislature this year passed a statute that was signed by the governor. Specifically, it's Indiana Code 5-14-1.5-3.5, which requires if you are participating by remote means, a couple of things. One, that you have to be seen and heard in order to vote on any matter. And secondly, that there are important limitations in the type of votes that can be cast remotely. Those include adopting a budget is one of six things that are on the list. So if a member is not physically present, they cannot vote on the budget. If a member is not able to be seen and heard, or I should say, yeah, heard and, you know, be able to be heard and seen on the whatever platform they're using, they cannot vote on any item.
So the question remains, I mean, they have to be in chambers to vote on the budget?
That is correct.
Is that all the budgets or just the city budget?
It just is...it just says adopt a budget is the way the statute reads. So I would defer to Mr. Berger to further define that. I would think a budget means any budget.
I agree.
Thank you. Mayor, your address.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I think hopefully Councilman Tyler and Councilwoman Alexander have time to get the city all before we debate and vote on the budget. I think that's the moral to the story, right? Anyway, thanks, Council President, for giving me a second. I'm sorry, I seem a little disheveled. This is my report from the mayor's office, October 12th, 2021. Today, the council in your packet has the fourth quarter gaming budget distribution report. It's a little down compared to where it was a year ago, 94%. Or was that down as of last quarter? Right. Little down compared to last quarter. It's 94% of what we got last quarter. Ending gaming balance is $4.6 million of the quarter. Capital Improvement Board gets $2.8 million of that. Mayor's discretionary, $688,000. Each of the six district council people get $115,000. Mayor's Gaming Advisory Committee gets $183,000. Randy Day Fund gets $183,000. That's in accordance with the, what I call the cheese grater, which is the ordinance we passed over a year ago, which distributes backwards the gaming revenues that we receive. So that's our quarterly report. Seems like Horseshoe's still doing well. I haven't compared Horseshoe to...I apologize. I'll try to get that for our next meeting, comparisons to Horseshoe, to Hard Rock, to see how we did as compared to Hard Rock. But the last time I reported to you, Horseshoe was holding its own, still the biggest casino in the state of Indiana. Hard Rock got us on, I want to say, table games during the last quarter. We'll see where we stand after this quarter, and we'll see, you know, if the trends continue into the future. Also, senior and disabled, for those of you in the audience watching, senior and disabled citizen tax credit program checks are going out. Checks will be mailed out by the end of next week to all qualifying seniors and those that meet the senior and disabled exemption under state law. We have a total of 2,110 households that qualify for the program. It's an increase of 96 residents from last year. Qualifications, for those of you watching at home, to meet the senior and disabled exemption, it's set by the state of Indiana. You must have the senior disabled exemption on your property taxes. You need to do that at the Lake County Auditor's Office, get it filed on your home. You must own your home. You must reside in that same home, must reside in that same home. You must be over the age of 65 and/or have a blind or disabled exemption from the state of Indiana, and you must meet certain income requirements. If you meet all those requirements, you get $500 check from the City Hammond to help you with your property tax bill. We've been doing this, I don't know, 14, 15 years. It's a great program, runs us about $1 million each year, and it helps us help Hammond senior and disabled homeowners pay their property taxes. So I want to thank the council for always prioritizing that, along with Megan Flores and the City Controller's Office. Report 2021, Realtors Breakfast was held at the Last March Golf Course on Thursday, September 30th. We had a couple hundred Realtors at that breakfast, presentations by multiple agencies in the city. I want to thank Councilman Spitali for being the council liaison to the Realtors, who do a great job for our city. They really...you could tell the Northwest Indiana Realtors really like coming to Hammond and helping sell in our city, and it's a great...it's turned into really one of a great event. So I want to thank everybody that participated in that. In the First District, on October 1st, we held the groundbreaking for Calumet College of St. Joseph's first dormitory. I know we'll be talking a little bit more about this project down the road, but we had the groundbreaking the other day, which was very nice. I see Dr. Amy in here. She'll be here to talk more about the ordinances before you regarding how we're going to lay out that area. October 5th, 2021, I presented to approximately 50 mayors from across Indiana on the use of social media, or the improper use of social media, depending on which story I was telling. Showed off Go Hammond TV, showed off Hammond 911. I want to thank the IT Department for setting up all these great programs for us so that I could go to the events like this and show off how well we're doing in the City Hammond. Hammond 911 has over 60,000 issues resolved, making us one of the top cities in America in the use of that platform. I got to show my fellow mayors that. I showed them what we do with Go Hammond TV, including many of the council meetings archived, and it was received very well by mayors from across Indiana, helping them, you know, giving them ideas. Councilman Mark?
911 or 311?
I'm sorry, 311. I typed it in here as 911. I apologize. And that's in the news right now, too. So let me set that straight. Hammond 311, not 911. That was taken from us. So anyway, thank you for pointing that out, Councilman. I want to give an update to the council on something that we've been working on to help save us some money that's gonna...we'll have more to share on this at your next council meeting, I'm sure. We issued an RFP last year, and we hired the Myers-Galleros Group to help provide my administration with a third-party review of current employee benefit practices and annual expenditures. You know, we wanted to do this while keeping in mind that Hammond wants to provide the best-in-class employee benefits while maintaining fiscal responsibility. We sent RFPs to healthcare providers to bid on our services to get an idea of how much money we could save if we switched providers. For those of you that aren't aware, we use Cigna now with a third-party provider, a professional claims management. We got this idea from the county, who did something similar, using similar...they also use a professional claims management, and the county changed healthcare providers and saved a tremendous amount of money, which gave us the idea. I in particular want to thank Councilman Hamm for helping us shed light on this problem and potential solution to saving money. We presented RFPs to Anthem. Like I said, we currently use Cigna. We sent proposals to Anthem, Aetna, and United Healthcare. These proposals were received. We interviewed the providers. Everything was reviewed and presented to the administration over the past couple of weeks. We had best and final offers given to us by all of those providers, except for Cigna, who felt a conflict because they currently...they felt like they're bidding against themselves because they're currently in that position. So they sort of sat out this whole thing, and a presentation was made to the administration over the last week that said that City Hammond, if we go with the recommendations of Myers-Galleros Group, could save anywhere from a half a million up to $2 million a year while maintaining the same level of benefits to our employees by eliminating the middleman, so to speak. Right now, we use professional claims management as the middleman, as the interface between us and our healthcare provider, and instead of paying a premium because we have this middleman, so to speak, we would go directly to the healthcare provider ourselves and save a tremendous amount of money while giving the employees the same level of healthcare we have. There's really very, very, very little difference about our plan going into this and coming out of it, other than maybe a couple dentists may not be in the new provider. And you'd still be able to go to that dentist, even if that were the case with you. It just maybe cost you a little bit more, but...
So are we looking at United at this point? Are they the...
We haven't made the final...United, being honest, you know, just between us. The United presented a really good case, Councilman Mark, and we're in the process of finalizing that, and I imagine by the time I'm here next time, I'll be able to give you the good news. And we also want to prepare the employees because if this is the direction we're going, and it's looking like that, by the end of the year, we have to have new healthcare cards. We have to have every employee trained on, you know, weaning themselves off of Cigna and going with United, and we, you know, we have to do a lot in three months. So my team's on this. We got great consultants helping us. I want to say Myers-Galleros, this is the first time we work together that I know of, and they're excellent. They've done an excellent job on a very complicated subject, and they made it so that even I could understand it. And then this is like a mental block with me. It's really hard to deal with healthcare and all the terms, and they made it real easy. So I want to thank the, you know, Controller's Office, my administration staff, and Myers-Galleros Group for doing great work for us. I know we have our budget pending before you today. I don't really hear too many questions coming back on the budget. If you have them, obviously, we're going to be here. I'm very proud of this budget. We worked real hard on it. And by the way, if we do make changes to our healthcare plan, and let's say there's a million-dollar savings in our budget, next year, the budget is set at the higher numbers. So any savings we get will be savings under the budget, hopefully, that we pass tonight. So...and last but not least, I know there's an ordinance that is causing some constemnation with a couple of the council members. I'm here to answer any questions. I got a memo today, dated today, on the ordinance requiring employees to provide notice to the City Hammond if they're charged with a crime. This is...this came about because we had a firefighter charged with two crimes, and we didn't find out until the second crime was reported to us. The only reason the second crime was reported to us is because our employee was in jail and couldn't come to work. And I said to myself, we don't have a reporting requirement for a Hammond firefighter? Like, if you have a firefighter that gets an OWI, they don't have to report it to their boss? That's insane. And the more we researched it, we realized that is the case. And the Hammond police officers, we researched them. Well, what about a cop? Of course, the cops have reporting requirements. So what we did with this ordinance is modeled off of what the police already do. It doesn't make sense if you're a police officer and you get charged with a crime that you're still out there arresting people, right? So we modeled our ordinance, the one that's pending before you, off of that ordinance, and quite frankly, didn't think it was very controversial. I just got this memo dated today, and I was a little, I mean, not upset, but, you know, there's some concern about, you know, due process. Like, are we going to interrogate the employee? Are we going to have them violate the U.S. Constitution by asking them questions? No. But if you're charged with a crime, I think we said, no, it's a public record if you get arrested. They put your picture in the paper. They don't ask you, hey, can I put your picture in the paper? They put it in there because it's a public record. And if you're arrested, we just want to know what the rest of the public knows. Hey, mayor. Hey, boss, I got an OWI. I got a lawyer. We're fighting it, and my license is suspended for six months. These are the basics. And then we take action accordingly. What if one of our employees, God forbid, had some type of improper...impropriety with a minor, and we found out about it after the fact? Wouldn't we want to know that before the fact to limit our liability? Maybe this person works in the sportsplex. Maybe this person has contact with other citizens. This ordinance would require that employee to notify us. It doesn't say that we're going to fire you. It doesn't say we're going to do anything. But if I have an employee that's been charged with improprieties with a minor, I think we'd probably want to make sure that employee's not going to be around minors, at the least, to limit our exposure as a city. If I have a police officer charged with a crime, we got to limit our exposure. They shouldn't be arresting people. That's where this is coming from. I didn't think it was very controversial until I got to work today. I got this memo, and I'm here to answer any questions. So the budget and da-da-da-da, that's all I got, unless council has any questions, and I will be here for the whole meeting. So...
Does anybody have any questions for the mayor?
Yes, sir.
When you spoke about United Healthcare, first you said a $2.5 million savings. Later, you said a $1 million...
It's a...I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilman. The question is, I gave like a range of...they gave us a range because it's all dependent. We could have a really bad year, and it could be lower, or we could have a great year where nobody really gets ill, and it could be higher, right? So they give you like a range. It's anywhere from $500,000 to somewhere over $2 million on a good year. But you'll see, we have good and bad years, just depending on the circumstances of our employees.
And police, fire, and union contracted employees? Would they be under this plan, too?
Yes, sir. Thank you for the question. We did something a while ago, and you were here with me, Councilman Mark. We changed the benefits to the employees by ordinance. And it was controversial at the time, but then what the administration did after that...so we, the council and the mayor at the time, I'm trying to remember, eight years ago-ish, the council and the mayor at the time said, this is the package, the benefit package we offer to Hammond City employees. I get the same package as the council, gets the same package as a police officer and a firefighter. We did that a while ago, which was the right thing to do. Then what we followed up with, Councilman Mark, as an administration, we tailored...when I took over as mayor, each firefighter, each police...each police officer had the benefits in the contract. So if we wanted to change the vision or the dental, we'd have to negotiate with the fire unions. And what we did was said, your benefits are defined by ordinance so-and-so. So we, the council and the mayor, could change the benefits without worrying about the union contracts. That's my long...
Everybody would get the same plan?
Yes, sir.
The new plan?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. The mayor, from the mayor down to our newest employee, we'd all have the same medical. Yes, sir. Any other questions? I'll be here for the meeting, so if you have anything else...
Does anybody have any further questions for the mayor?
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval of minutes.
President.
Councilman Spitali.
Motion's accepted. Minutes from September 27, 2021 be placed on file, please.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Spitali, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Are there any...is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakels.
Make a motion to approve claims dated 10/4, 2021, and ending with claims dated 10/6, 2021. Claim number 4845 through claim number 5104 in the amount of $5,675,401.35.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakels, seconded by Councilwoman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Item number five...I'm sorry, item number six, public hearings, there are none. Item number seven, communications. Does anybody have anything under communications? Does anybody have anything under communications? Hearing none. Communications are now closed. Item number eight, committee reports. Oops, I hit that at the wrong time.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes. Council as a whole will be bringing out 2135, 2136, 2137, 2138, 2139, 2140, and 2141. I also have a capital improvements board report and crime watch. Mr. President, alrighty. Capital Improvements Board met on October 4th. We approved $1,562.81. A change orders number two, three, and four for the Purdue Refuge Island. We also approved $136,745 for Holman Avenue Phase II Design. That is between Russell to Clinton Streets. We also approved $1 million...I'm sorry, $181,575 for Holman Avenue Complete Streets, Clinton to Douglas through American Structure Point. And that is it. Our next meeting will be on the 18th of October, 4:00 p.m. here in the council chambers. Also, the community and crime watch meetings coming up on this Thursday, October 14th. The Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will meet at Calumet College, beginning at 6:30 p.m. Also, on October 14th, this Thursday, is the South Holman Avenue Neighborhood Watch, formerly known as the Indy Ilye Crime Watch, will meet at Trinity Lutheran Church on 173rd and Holman. That is at 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, October 21st, Hessville Crime Watch will meet at the Jean Shepherd Center at 6:00 p.m. On Wednesday, November 3rd, Edison Community Watch will meet at Edison School at 6:30 p.m. And Irving Community Watch will meet at Irving School on Friday, November 5th at 9:15 a.m. I missed one. Hammond Elderly will have a meeting on Wednesday, October 27th at 1:00 p.m. These meetings are great to find out what's going on in your neighborhood, what's going on in your city, and get a lot of questions answered that you may have. As always, if you see anything suspicious, please call 911 because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody have anything else on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything else on the committee reports?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to add something to Councilwoman Vines's report for the community and crime watches. The Harrison Park Community Watch is tentatively planning a meeting for Tuesday, October 26th at 5:30 p.m. at the F W. Post on Holman Avenue. Once we secure all of your information, I'll go ahead and release that so the public can know. But we're looking to bring in Jim Taylor, if he's available, to talk about future plans for Harrison Park. I know I've got a lot of residents asking me about that. So, Councilwoman Vines, if you can, please add that to your list, and I'll, like I said, give you more details once we secure more information for that. Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you. And what time was that?
5:30.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on their committee reports? Hearing nothing on their committee reports. Committee reports are now closed. Item number nine, ordinance, third reading, final passage.
Ordinance... Ordinance 21-35 sponsored by Councilman Tyler and Councilman Torres. An ordinance establishing a two-way street on one block of Doty Street to access Holman Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
Move for final adoption and passage of ordinance 2135.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Torres, seconded by Councilman...excuse me, Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
This ordinance concerns 100 block of Doty Street. It proposes to make...currently, 100 block of Doty Street is one-way west from Holman to State Line. This ordinance proposes to make from Holman to the alley line, which is about 50 feet, a two-way. This will accommodate a business tire shop going on the southwest corner. And it had a pause of two council meetings for the...the mayor called for a traffic study to go in front of the Board of Works. Last Thursday, the Board of Works did approve it. The agency's concern, police, fire, and the public works had no problem with it. So I encourage my colleagues to vote for it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance 21-36, the Hammond 2022 budget proposal sponsored by Mayor McDermott.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2136.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakels. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
President Warpo, two council people are excluded from voting on the budget according to statute 5-14-1.5-3.5, and that is Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler, so I will not call their names for the roll call.
Thank you, Clerk Golick.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, six in favor, one opposed, with two absent.
Ordinance 21-37, the 2022 budget proposal for the Hammond redevelopment sponsored by Councilman Spitali and Councilwoman Vines.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Spitali. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, Mr. President. I move for final passage of 2137.
Can't be perfect all the time. Come on now.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption. 2137 by Councilwoman Vines and seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Mr. President, the same thing applies not only to this budget, but any budget being acted tonight. Councilwoman Alexander and Councilman Tyler are excluded from voting on it, according to the state statute. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, twenty-one thirty-seven passes, seven in favor, zero opposed, with two absent.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-eight, the two thousand twenty-two budget proposal for the sanitary district of Hammond Sewer Maintenance Fund Special Sanitary Debt Service Fund, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines and Councilman Spitali.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one thirty-eight.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo. Yes.
Let the record show, seven in favor, zero opposed, with two absent.
Ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-nine, sponsored by Mayor McDermott. An ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all city officials and employees of the city of Hammond, Indiana, and other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of twenty-one thirty-nine by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
No.
This would not, does this apply, this is the same thing?
Yep.
I'm not sure this is, ordinance fixing the salaries, it's not a budget. You have the Attorney Berger is sitting back there.
Kevin, you've got the statute.
This isn't a budget, this is fixing the salary, so is it a regular ordinance?
You guys have a attorney. You guys, like, use your attorneys. I don't like giving stuff that's.
I mean, I'm sorry, Attorney Berger?
Yeah, Kevin had the text with him on the computer. I, I don't think so, but, well, I think she can vote.
The ruling by our attorney is, the two councilmen not present can vote. Is that how I understand it?
It's not a budget.
Not a budget, so he says that they can vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance twenty-one dash forty, sponsored by Mayor McDermott. An ordinance fixing the salaries and wages of all policemen and firemen in the city of Hammond, Indiana, other than those fixed by statute or by ordinance heretofore enacted, and fixing the effective date thereof.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one forty.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of twenty-one forty by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kalwinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes. Let the record show, the ordinance passes, nine in favor, zero opposed.
Ordinance twenty-one dash forty-one, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. An ordinance amending ordinance numbers sixty-fourty-nine, seventy-four, seventy-two, eighty-six, twenty, eighty-six, thirty-eight, eighty-six, sixty-nine, ninety-one, eighty-one, ninety-two, forty-two, and ninety-four, twenty-nine, also known as section thirty-seven point zero-two-zero of the Hammond Municipal Code pertaining to an employee reporting policy.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of twenty-one forty-one.
Second.
Motion's been made for final passage and adoption of twenty-one forty-one by Councilman, Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Rakos. Is there any discussion?
I think there's been plenty of discussion. This ordinance requires an employee who gets in trouble when they're off duty to report to their superior.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Councilman Kowinski.
Thank you. Yes, a lot of the discussion actually was through me, I think. And I want to make it clear that I'm not opposed to the intent of the ordinance, but some of the language in it on the last page felt a little loose to me, and I, I may be the only one, but our attorney kind of agreed with it, and my request was to maybe take it to committee again and review it, but I don't think I have the backing on that. But I, and I do want to apologize to the mayor. It came to you short, with short notice, because of me. I dwelled on this for a while before asking the council attorney to also look into it with me and for me, and that's why you got his findings so late today. So, my apologies for that. But I wrangled over this and whether to do something about it, and I guess at the late in the game, I decided to go forward, so my apologies again. And the language in it, I'm, in speaking with you earlier, you mentioned that this is modeled behind the police departments. Is it the exact language? Do you know? Or is it different?
Ms. President, thanks, Councilman Mark. The police department is modeled, it's modeled after a general order and a police department regulation, so officers have to follow it, but it's modeled after the same language in the general order that would impose similar types of requirements on our employees as well. And for what it's worth, the Hammond Sanitary District, Hammond Water Company, Hammond Housing Authority, and the Hammond Port Authority are following suit with similar language, so it applies equally to all employees, regardless if you're working in a utility or working for the city of Hammond. And I accept your apology. Yeah, I was taken aback a little at first, and I understand, and I appreciate it. We don't need nine votes, as you know, Councilman Mark, you know, and obviously, there's dissent on this issue, and I just want you to know why we came up with it, was we had an employee with two OWIs. I think we should have been notified after the first OWI. It was a firefighter. We're working through that issue. We didn't punish the employee. We're working through it, though, and we think this employee has issues that they need to deal with, and that's where we could intervene and help. But it's not just, oh, you got two OWIs, you're fired. It's more like, what's this person's job? If it's a secretarial type of job, do we really have to be worried like that? But if they're in public works, that's something to be worried about. They're a first responder. It just, you know, I've had a few situations with employees. We had an employee that was firing a gun in the air. We found out through social media. I didn't find out from the employee. We found out from social media, and then the employee was arrested. Had another employee that fled from an accident. We've had a multitude of employee issues, and usually the way we find out is through the newspaper or social media. And this would put the onus on the employee that's charged with the crime to give us the heads up, so we could deal with it and expose, you know, limit our exposure, but.
And I believe the intent is worthy.
Thank you.
Just, I had some issues with the language.
I understand. I appreciate your concerns, and, you know, we're all, he's not going to agree on every issue, so, but I appreciate you bringing that up, and I appreciate Attorney Berger looking into it. I don't necessarily agree with the conclusions, but there's room for debate, so thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I, I didn't look at it at first as closely as Councilman Kowinski, but after hearing the arguments, I kind of tend to agree with the Councilman Kowinski that the language is not clear enough, and the ordinance can be used by the department head or any supervisor or anyone that does the reporting for the wrong purpose, accuse somebody of something that is not clear if they did or not. So, I kind of agree that the language should specifically state, even though there be lengthy crimes, but the more serious crimes that this apply to or offenses. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Mayor.
I think working for the city of Hammond is a, it's a privilege. I think that these are great jobs that we have. Our job is to sell our city, to be professional, to work hard, and I think that when we have employees that are getting charged with crimes, asking them to report it to their boss is not a very big imposition. I actually find it sort of, I'm sort of incredulous for having this discussion. I really didn't think this was going to be controversial, and it seems to be controversial, and we're sticking up for people that are charged with crimes at the expense of department heads who are being made out to be the bad guys, or maybe me. I'm the bad guy. I mean, keep in mind, nothing is triggered under this until you're charged with a crime. And when you were a Hammond police officer, Councilman Torres, you had to do this also, I imagine. The general rule was in place then, maybe it wasn't, because that was a while ago, but I know current Hammond police officers have to comply with this.
Mr. President.
Councilman Torres.
I agreed with the intent purpose of the ordinance, and it's just with the language of it that I don't agree. And of course, I'm not accusing anybody that's going to back up somebody that hit a serious crime or an offense. Attorney Smith brought out a pedophile, that's a serious thing, and we would not want a pedophile to be exposed to kids or actually anybody. But, but the ordinance itself does not state crimes like that. The serious crimes that I know you intend their ordinance to bring out. So, that's just my point of view, but I'm not accusing anybody of being weak on anything.
I know.
We want those, I would think we want those kind of people exposed if they're out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I just want to go on record and say that I, so I kind of reluctantly voted yes on this a couple weeks ago. And I think that the arguments brought up today by Councilman Torres, Councilman Kalwinski, and Attorney Berger are off ballot points, and I think that, like everyone shared, we understand the need for ordinance like this, but at the same time, it doesn't do anything to say that nothing will be done. It kind of leaves it open to interpretation. And I understand that, like, our mayor, our department heads right now are not the type of people to, to, you know, fire someone or change their job description or anything like that, penalize them for only being arrested. But I do think that, like, we are passing ordinances that might last for the longevity of our city or until someone else changes these ordinances. And in that sense, I think we have to do better, I think it's just a better job of, like, updating the language so that it does not leave it open to interpretation. And it is written as fact instead of somebody being able to use it, I guess, kind of in their own will, to do what they want with an employee who, who has been arrested but not proven guilty of said crime. And once again, I do want to go on record and say that, like, I understand that, like, there are some people who commit some serious crimes, and, like, those people maybe should not be allowed to operate in their positions, depending on what those crimes are, they come into contact with. I'm not arguing with that at all, but I think the language in this can be updated to more, better represent the message that we are trying to get across to our employees across the city. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Sorry, Councilman.
Councilman Rakos.
Okay. We need to read what, I don't know what people are reading here. It says, "City Hammond commits to review their circumstances and pending charges, conduct an individual assessment of the charge, the circumstances, and connection to employees' job duties. The department's head supervisor, in conjunction with the personnel director, will determine the most appropriate action, course of action, if any. Such action may include, but is not limited to modification of duties or work assignment." That's what that says. What people are getting all hung up on is misrepresentation of the circumstances or nature of arrest and/or charge may be grounds for disciplinary action, up to including termination. Not the fact that they reported it to their supervisor. It does not say they could be up to termination for reporting the arrest. It says they need to talk to their supervisor, and they'll determine what the appropriate course of action is. Such action may include, but is not limited to modification of duties or work assignment. That should be the very least. The only time it includes that people, that everybody's going to all upset about possible termination, is if they misrepresent the circumstances or nature of the arrest or, and/or charge may be grounds for disciplinary action. If they're lying about it, after, that is a separate offense. That's what I, how I read this. I don't understand what the problem is.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Yeah, I, my, I think part of my, my biggest concern with this is that, like Councilman Rakos just stated, it is open to interpretation by that department head. So, you could have two people who are arrested for the same crime be treated very differently, depending on who that department head is and who they think, or what course of action they feel like they want to take. So, my, I think my point is that I think we should have stronger language in terms of what crimes, what crimes will be committed, and then what action will be taken by the department head. Maybe this is something that the H.R. Department, Personnel Department handles, instead of that department head, to make sure that, like, everyone is treated equally within our city, depending on what crime they commit, and it's not given, like, each department head is not given, kind of like, leniency to the side, because what I don't want to happen is that maybe a department head and employee don't have the best relationship, and so they are treated or penalized more severely than somebody else by committing the same crime, just because they don't have that positive relationship. So, I'm not saying it will happen, but I'm saying that it's our, I think it's our responsibility to make sure that it doesn't happen, and we do that through language of the ordinance.
You want to speak on this?
Me?
Is there any further discussion?
I'm absolutely incredulous about this discussion. I am absolutely incredulous. Like, we have employees that make a good buck, and we're asking these employees if they're charged with a crime under the state of Indiana, and we have council members willing to stand behind them and say, no, they shouldn't have to report it. I have half a mind to say, let's just vote on it, and let's see who's standing with the employees, standing with, you know, that are charged with crimes, and who's standing with the administration. I have half a mind to do that, but I don't like doing business like this. I've seen nothing as an alternative, just a torpedo on the day of the council meeting. This has been in committee for a month, and this is the first time we're discussing this, and it's a torpedo on the day of the council meeting, which is becoming the norm, unfortunately. So, I have half a mind to say, let's just do it. I believe in math, and I have a feeling we're going to get five, but that's not the way to do business. It's certainly not going to lead to goodwill between the council and the mayor. This is, employees charged with crimes. That's what we're sticking up for here, right? That's, we, an employee that gets charged with a crime, an OWI, a crime, they're facing prison, they don't have to tell their boss. That's absolutely ludicrous. I can't believe we're having this discussion. Just can't.
I can't either.
I can't. This is embarrassing, actually. We're sticking up for people that are breaking the law and taking taxpayer dollars and using it, and they're breaking the law, and they don't have to even tell us. It's insane. I mean, take a step back, council. Look at what you're proposing here. Take a step back. This is not controversial. Take a step back. Employees charged with crimes don't have to tell us. That's insane.
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
Just for clarification, I don't think any of us are saying that they shouldn't have to report how that they were arrested. I think that what we're saying is that we want to make sure that the language in the ordinance is stronger so that the actions that a department head can take against them, if they find out that they are arrested, are equal under this ordinance. And I think the other thing that I guess I'm getting confused about is, are we talking about, like, being arrested, or are we talking about, like, being charged with a crime? Because you can be arrested but not be actually charged with a crime. And I thought that the ordinance said arrested, but maybe I'm remembering it incorrectly.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
This ordinance is requiring an employee to report an offense. This ordinance is requiring an employee to report an offense to their supervisor, plain and simple. Why? I guess I don't understand why it is being read into the language here, putting in between the lines, everyone saying that, oh, the employee's not going to be treated fairly because he's not liked by his supervisor or the personnel director. That's not the way we do business here. We are very fair in the way we conduct business with offenses with employees. And to even imply that, that we would treat an employee differently because of a personality difference when someone has been arrested for two DUIs or child pornography, I mean, you name it. I believe that that employee has an obligation to advise their supervisor as to what has happened in their life. I would much rather know upfront than to be blindsided and have it in the front page of the Hammond Times that somebody, you know, was arrested for so-and-so, the city of Hammond did nothing. All this says is that the employee is required to report the offense, plain and simple. Don't make stuff up in between the lines here.
Mr. President, to further go upon Councilwoman Vanez's argument, when are we supposed to find out? When it's trending on Twitter or on Facebook and we have this employee working in a place where they probably shouldn't be working? Maybe they were charged with a crime that, you know, and there's around people and they shouldn't be? Maybe we could take actions and keep the person employed, but like, how do we do that if we don't know? And right now, they're not telling us. I don't think this is very controversial. I think, I mean, obviously it doesn't say much about my administration if three of the council people or four of the council people are saying, you're going to do bad things with this power. The bottom line is, our employees shouldn't be charged with crimes. I've been mayor for 18 years. I haven't been charged with a crime once, nor do I plan on being charged. I can confidently tell you, I'm not going to be charged with a crime. Okay? I have a feeling most of the people looking at me right now in the city council could say the same thing about the last couple of decades of their life. This isn't something that should happen once every six months or once a year. And if it does, I don't want those people working for us. Plain and simple. If you're constantly being charged with crime, arrested by police officers, arrested by the Hammond PD, you should not be an employee of the city of Hammond, taking taxpayer dollars home. That's the bottom line. These are the types of employees that are taking up a good spot from a good Hammond resident that wants that job and won't get charged with crimes. They're taking a spot from a good resident that doesn't get arrested.
Does anybody that hasn't spoken three times on this issue wish to further the discussion? Does anybody else have any discussion to add?
Mr. President, can I say one more thing? This is a defining issue for me. I think we should go forward with the vote. I really do. I want to see who's standing with the administration, trying to rid our ranks and clear our ranks of employees charged with crimes and who's standing with employees that get charged with crimes. Let's see who it is. Let's put it on the record right now and we can talk about it in two years.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't think Hammond residents want to see our employees being charged with crimes. And I think Hammond residents are very interested in this vote. Who's standing with the criminals and who's standing with the administration trying to clean out our ranks? Let's see who stands where. I'm interested.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Kowinski.
As the mayor was speaking about a minute ago, he said that if they were arrested, they should be replaced. And I think that's part of what we're looking at is language that says because you're arrested, does that automatically mean you get replaced? Instead of are you convicted, then you get replaced? Or when you're arrested, do you go on leave? Or what is the, what is the process? But you just said that if they're arrested for a crime, they should be, they should be replaced, they should be out. So, I think that's your stand. I think that's.
Councilman Mark, I know the residents in your district, major concern is crime. I find it ironic that you, who's supposedly tough on crime, are sticking up for employees that are getting arrested. I find that ironic. It's one of the, it's one of my top priorities in the city of Hammond is making this city safe. Councilman Torres, you know that. You were out there patrolling the streets for decades, right? And now what we're saying is, if we have an employee that's leading to part of this problem, oh, this poor employee, oh, we can't have them talk to their boss and tell their boss. You wonder why our country is in a situation like this if we're debating this issue? You wonder why we're in a situation like that? I have a hard time understanding how you're going to go back to the first district if you're justifying this, Councilman Mark? Because I know what your residents say. I know how your residents feel. They tell us.
Mr. President.
Final time, Councilman Kowinski.
I'll stop talking to you, Councilman.
I get at least as many. But anyway, I think those of us who are raising concern aren't saying that we're against the ordinance. We're saying the intent of the ordinance seems reasonable. We just want the language tightened up so there's, so it's very clear what will happen, to who it will happen to and how it will happen, and to come upon agreement upon that. I think that's not unreasonable. And because of the language and I, our council, our council attorney agrees that the language should be tightened up, I'm going along with our attorney. I mean, I think that's reasonable to say, can we look at some more, look at this and look at some language? And maybe this has to be wrangled out through a couple of attorneys, but if not, then call for the vote, whatever you want.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vanez.
I'm sorry, did I interrupt?
No, Councilwoman, are you done? Councilwoman Vanez.
Finally, and then I'll call for the vote. To tighten up the language the way it's being suggested would give a predetermined conclusion. If you're saying that this is going to happen, this is going to happen, this is going to happen, all we're saying is that you have to report the crime. That's it. No predetermined conclusion, no reading between the lines, just report the occurrence. And now, Mr. President, I'll call for the vote.
Motion's been made to call for the vote.
Seconded.
And seconded, there's no discussion on the call for the vote. Clerk Golick, roll call. She's present and has to vote.
Absen.
Frozen.
Is she frozen?
Frozen, yeah. All right, it looks like it's coming out.
I didn't hear the vote.
Councilwoman Alexander, can you hear us? Pardon?
I can hear you now.
The mo.
I can hear you now, I'm sorry.
The motion's been made and seconded for the call for the vote. We're taking a roll call on the call for the vote.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Torres.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, six in favor, three opposed. On the call for the vote, Clerk Golick now on the motion itself.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
No.
Torres.
No.
Tyler.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, motion carries, five in favors, four opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 21-42 sponsored by Councilman Torres, excuse me, Councilman Kowinski. An ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514. An ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond including the regulations and maps to administer the zoning plan in order to promote, provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 2450 New York Avenue.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
I move that 2142 pass through first and second reading. Be referred to council as a whole on 10/25/21 at 5:15 PM as well as a notice of intent to consider for 10/25/21. I so move.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kowinski.
When they acknowledged that Dr. Amy McCormick from Calumet College St. Joseph's is in the crowd to kind of monitor this vote, and I can tell you that this ordinance has to do with changing the zoning to allow for a dormitory building, a three-story dormitory building to be built and to have a field, a sports field adjacent to the dormitory. And in order to have those two events occur, we have to rezone properly for that to happen. And if I can, I'd like to invite Dr. McCormick to our 10/25 meeting on Monday, 10/25 at the council as a whole committee meeting at 5:15 PM where you can, if you are able to be here, to take questions and give comment about what you're trying to do.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Kowinski, seconded by Councilwoman Vanez. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed.
President Warpo, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Item number 11, resolutions, there are none. Item number 12, new and unfinished business. Does anybody have any new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Councilman, I heard Councilman Kowinski first.
Mr. President, just to be clear, do you, when you recalled 21-42, did you also mention the notice of intent to consider on 10/25? It wasn't clear whether you mentioned it or I said it.
There is intent to consider on.
10/25?
On 10/25.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Alexander.
I have our updated COVID numbers for the week of October 12. For 4632, oh, we have 38 new cases. For 46327, we have 52 new cases. For 46323, we have 93 new cases. For 46324, we have 52 new cases. For 46394, we have 28 additional cases. That's 255 cases, which is about 54 cases less than our last meeting. As for fully vaccinated residents, for 4632, oh, we have 137 new fully vaccinated residents, which brings our percentage to 46.8%. For 46327, 155 new fully vaccinated residents, which brings the percent to 45.9%. For 46323, we have 359 fully vaccinated residents, which brings the percent to 49.4%. For 46324, we have 424 new fully vaccinated residents, which brings our percent to 50.6%. For 46394, 177 new fully vaccinated residents, which brings our percent to 52%. We are now in, through our percent codes, highly hit the 50% mark. So, as for the residents, continue to research those vaccines, continue to think about getting vaccinated. Studies are showing that vaccinations are helping, that even if you do get sick, you're not getting as sick versus those that are not vaccinated with the different variants that are out here. Continue to mask up as much as you can, social distance as much as possible, and stay safe because we want to continue to keep our residents as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? I just wanted to state to the council members present that we have to stick around and sign the budget after the meeting.
Three budgets.
The three budgets. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing none. Councilman Emerson, once again, lost a friendly bet between the Packers and the Steelers to myself since the last meeting. Other than that, does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
It's mine for the fifth district.
There you go. Is anybody else, hearing none? New and unfinished business is closed. I see Thomas Novak has signed up to speak. Does he wish to speak?
Just left.
Mr. Novak, do you wish to speak?
No.
Your name's on the sheet.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I, I thought I was just signing in to say, no.
I signed in yesterday, the last meeting too, so.
Yeah.
Hearing nobody wishing to speak, our entertaining motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vanez, seconded by Councilman Rakos, Clerk Golick,
Alexander.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez. Yes. Kowinski.
Yes.
Torres.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Warpo.
Yes, let the record show, nine in favor, zero opposed. Have a nice night.
Have a good evening.